Welcome. We're going to call this meeting to order at 6:32. We've got a good crowd this evening. I have invited Ms. Timberlake-Kallen to open us with the vacation. Which I...
Father God, we submit ourselves to you tonight. We most humbly ask for your sovereign and divine guidance, for as your word says in Psalm 127:1, "Unless the Lord builds the house, a labor in vain who builds it; unless the Lord guards the city, the watchman keeps awake in vain." We admit, Lord, that we are not able to govern as you would have us to with truthfulness, honesty, wisdom, and humility if we do not first seek you for the ability to govern. Our former president, Abraham Lincoln, once stated that "No man is good enough to govern another man without that other's consent," and that "To secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Let us therefore tonight remember that these councilmen and women here seated have been given the right to govern by you and by these citizens here also seated, and more beside that are not present. May this council then so govern tonight as earlier reflected, with truthfulness, honesty, wisdom, and humility on behalf of those who serve, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
We're moving into citizens' applications. I have Mr. Daniel Perez, who would like to address the council of assembly.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the city of Van Alstine here for about ten years, local businessman in a construction company, in a construction business here in Van Alstine. I wanted to extend thanks to folks here at the city council because you guys take time away from your families and businesses to obviously serve us as citizens, also with the police and private department and all the folks there here. I want to thank you for allowing me this moment to speak. A couple of weeks ago, I was reading a paper, and while I was reading, I read about the comments that our mayor had made about construction folks and people who have come to this community to help build our community. The first time I read them, I realized that maybe I didn't read it right, and I went back and read it again. I've always been a slow reader. And what I was struck by was the words that were spoken, because for me, knowing the mayor as I do, which is not very well, but I realized that the words did not match the personality of the person that spoke. A couple of weeks later, I was down here at City Hall, and I was approached by one of the TV stations' telephoto people, because obviously it was a very big deal for them. I explained to them that, you know, things were probably misspoken and not said the way they were meant to be said. Irregardless, the words were spoken. When I saw the report on the TV, I was still kind of taken aback, and the only thing I kept thinking was, "I know this person, and I know this person, and I intend to speak as such." I believe, as a concerned citizen, if we accept our mayor's words as true, I think it's very important that we accept her apologies, because I believe that she misspoke, and I believe that certainly not her character. I have one more quick comment, and back a couple of weeks ago when I read about that. It sounds like you folks, as a community, are addressing construction issues. I've done it for 35 years. I think it's important that you do lay some kind of criteria. Construction companies are accustomed to doing some of that, and I think it's important for our community to embrace the growth that is coming to our city. The cities that have been successful have embraced the growth. Plano, McKinney, Frisco, Allen. It's a very great opportunity for our country, and hopefully, I mean, for our city, and hopefully in the next 10 years, we will be able to find a way to turn it into a productive process. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Next, I have Mr. Rick DeMasters.
I'm Rick DeMasters. I live at 1507 Syracuse Drive. I'm a resident here in Van Alstine. I want to start by thanking the mayor and the city council for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. Let me first start by applauding you, just as Mr. Perez said, by the city leadership, or the city leadership as a whole, for taking on such a thankless and time-consuming job of representing our community and its citizens. Your time and commitment and dedication to self-serve in your elected capacities can be deemed a selfless and worthy act. Due to professional limitations and relation affiliations, it is not often, if any, that I am given an opportunity to publicly share my concerns with a group such as this. However, as a taxpaying citizen, as a resident, as a vested business owner and former educator of this community, I feel it necessary to speak out in support of concerns that myself and others share. I would also be remiss in my duties as a husband and as a father to not defend my family's character and integrity against certain statements that have been made by individual members of this council. I have three points that I want to bring to your attention. This is not to publicly attack anyone. This is simply to raise your level of awareness and try to educate folks and get us on the same page, because we're here for the same reason, I would hope. The first point that I want to cover is the disappointment in the collaborative efforts of certain council members to work together for the common good of Van Alstine, my perception and others. A competent council member is much more than a purveyor of community issues. It is assumed that each member would display courtesy and professionalism when conducting city business, and that he or she would minimize negative incidents or embarrassing situations. No estimate of worth could be placed upon the willingness of a dedicated and professional council member who works collaboratively with all entities to make our community a better place to live. An effective council should be able to agree to disagree, but in the end, positively support the decisions that are made to put Van Alstine in a better light. It is highly unfortunate that we seem to have individual council members who are more concerned with promoting their own personal agendas than promoting the positive aspects of our community. Due to this type of mindset, I, as a citizen, and I am concerned that Van Alstine will continue to struggle at drawing new residents, new businesses, and new tax dollars unless those efforts change. In your campaign for city council, Mr. Smith, you've indicated that you have found a spot in your mind for the future of Van Alstine and what that looked like down the road in 10 years. You have previously indicated that a path had been cleared for Van Alstine to grow under an effective city management team, and that in plan for the future, for future growth, in plan for the future, that growth was the answer. I hope that publicly throwing other effective city management team members under the bus was not the spot that you were referring to, and I certainly don't think that that is the right way to help our community grow. In fact, I think that would be considered counterproductive. Ms. Tuber made a profound statement in her quest as a city council member in that she was trying to find out just exactly what the council does. Like most other councils, it is obviously to set policy, approve budgets, determine tax rates, along with the mayor appointing the city manager, issue and sell municipal bonds, purchase and sell property, establish city departments, and approve city ordinances, and determine city services. It is not the council's responsibility to embarrass our community by publicly showing non-support of city leadership and/or decisions made to benefit the city of Van Alstine. Other than stepping on some toes, disrupting some patterns of behavior, as you put it, Mr. Smith, and being a complete embarrassment to our city, Ms. Tuber, I can't see that much is approved in our capacities to city council representatives. The second point that I want to bring to your attention is defending the character and integrity of the mayor and my family, because I feel like that there's been a personal attack take place. That's not the intent of this council. That's not what our goals and aspirations should be. If there's a person in this room who has never made a comment that was taken out of context in trying to make a point, let him or her catch the first stone. You've used negative terms such as racist, snobbish, arrogant, insensitive, negative, and elitist to describe the mayor. I can tell you for the one who knows best that none of those definitions apply. I challenge those of you who use those terms loosely to take inventory. Since Mr. Smith's arrival to Van Alstine, the mayor has been a constant friend and loyal supporter when many others have shown resentment and discord towards him. In Mr. Smith's effort to raise public awareness by contacting the media and making a spectacle out of our community, we've taken steps in reverse at the possibility of growth, unfortunately. Due to the media frenzy and their quest to find a story which did not exist, our family business has been affected, and having my children to answer questions has created an anxiety level for them that they do not deserve. As a dedicated advocate for the Texoma Patriots Tea Party group, Ms. Tuber has shown strong support in her opposition of not allowing census counts of illegal aliens to be used in the state's redistricting efforts of political boundaries. She is named as a plaintiff in a federal lawsuit that demands these figures of illegal aliens not be used, but yet claims in her letter to the editor to be a friend of ESL Inhabitants. I find it even more crass and hypocritical on Ms. Tuber's part to share an excerpt from the Bible in her letter to the editor indicating that the mayor needs to love God and her neighborhood as herself when Ms. Tuber shares propaganda online condemning the Islam and Muslim faith. Who needs the sensitivity training here? Even though my family and I, we do not agree with the terrorist organizations that seem to manifest themselves through this religion, this propaganda attacks the religion as a whole with racist and ideological statements that certainly God would not approve of. My family and I have witnessed and endured firsthand the sleepless nights, the stress and anxiety of making decisions for the best interests of this city, time spent away from her family, time spent away from her real job, the one that helps pay the bills, the countless hours and other capacities since becoming a solid and dedicated member of this community. A lot of those capacities include being an active member and officer of our Van Alstine Athletic Booster Club. She has chaired several fundraising events for schools and civic organizations. She's been an active member and officer of the VA Chamber, that implemented membership committees, and was responsible for implementing the Live in Van Alstine Facebook page, along with being voted as Citizen of the Year. She's chaired downtown summer events that have brought free family entertainment and business into our community. She's been an active board member for Keep Van Alstine Beautiful. She's been an active participant in the EDC and CDC meetings. She delivers meals on wheels to the elderly and the needy, no matter their ethnicity. She volunteers at the Van Alstine Museum. She participates in many ribbon-cutting ceremonies for new businesses in our community. She attends multiple trainings to become a more effective city leader. Most of what she volunteers for, she has to close the doors to her own business and take a time away from her own family. I'd like to close with this final point. There are several citizens of Van Alstine that want to offer this group as an entire whole a challenge to focus on the needs of our community and not on the elementary and self-righteous attitudes that are being displayed by disgruntled council members. We challenge and encourage you to participate, to attend and participate in available trainings and continuing education opportunities that will help you to become a better-informed and more effective city council member. Put your personal vendettas aside, please. You owe that to us. If your focus is to continue to attack and garner support for your personal agendas, then shame on you and the horse you rode in on. The community of Van Alstine deserves better. We beg you to start the heating process. Grow as one. Educate yourselves and put your petty childish inequities aside. Our citizens, our commerce, and our education system deserve not to be the laughingstock of small communities. We charge you and empower you to get the job done and to put Van Alstine on the map where it belongs as a growing and thriving community. We have placed you here. You have a job to do. Simply put, get it done or resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMasters. This evening, we do not have any public hearings. We'll move on to the consent agenda, number six, approval of minutes from the October 30th, 2012, special call meeting on the February 23rd, 2013 regular meeting. The council has previously received copies of these minutes to go over, so I'll ask, anybody have any changes or any questions? I have a motion, Councilwoman Smith, to approve both October 30th, 2012, and February 23rd, 2013 meeting minutes on a second.
That's right.
If our council would vote all in favor. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to regular consent, regular agenda non-consent, number seven, discussion utility payments, extension policy. Citizen requests concern about utility customers who work abroad and are under any request of extensions in person. Citizen says banks, gas, and electric company all accepted extensions over the phone and would like the council to discuss allowing extension by phone request. And the gentleman that asked for this to be on the agenda is not here. So we can take this, or somebody wants to, the council wants to discuss it?
Is there a reason why we can't take this request over the phone? What is the reason?
We've actually looked into, talked to our credit card company. No?
No. Over, as far as the extension policy over the phone?
As far as the extension policy?
Right.
Okay. As far as look up for extension issue. As far as extension policy over the phone, we would like to have something in writing for their file, so that way we have a status quo available time.
There's also a part of the policy that council passed in November that it was required in writing.
Is there a reason that can't be deleted, that one statement that required in writing? This is, this is something that we have, a relatively global community. There are times that some of us, I'm stuck here every day. I don't leave the block on a lot of occasions. But there are people that travel and are not physically in town. There are a lot of people that are gone for extended periods of time. It's an accepted policy with other utilities. I don't understand why it can't be accepted. To, it's not a customer service. It's taken care of by customers, meeting our customers' needs.
Do you, would you?
Do we have a number on him?
I would like to ask, you say that we do this as an instrument to have some type of documentation on filing, and just a phone call. When I read this, and I understand that there may be occasions when someone is, I'm not sure about working abroad, usually those types of situations, you have well planned ahead and know you're going to be out of town if you're abroad. One thing with, I don't know how many, traveling abroad, phone service is usually the first thing you lose. I don't have an opposing to all of this, but I think we should possibly limit to, I know we're limited four extensions per year, I believe is what the fourth exception says, and I would, I wouldn't have any problem with proposing of the four we allow to per year to be by phone or email, electronic emails. Even email would give complete documentation, and it is now considered legal.
Julie, is there a legal issue on that, that a phone conversation could be considered acceptable?
I would think as long as they added, if they give you enough information, if they give you the account number, and they give you some information that just anybody couldn't call in and do it, they'd have to have the bill right there with them. I think they'd have to do something like that.
Well, we had a member of our community that was on the cruise ship.
Triumph, and he didn't have it with him.
That could be an incident, a snowstorm, I believe is what started this conversation. I don't know that we anticipate a snowstorm to be caught in a blizzard and not being able to physically return to home base. That's beyond our control. We're not talking about just every time you feel like, we're talking about extraordinary experience incidents.
But the documentation tracking, is that more to have an instrument that they have agreed to do for, say, a payment schedule?
Right.
Or more so than identifying your account?
Right. Because we, in the policy, they have to fill in the amount that they're going to pay and the date that it's due. That way, there's, I guess, no question as to, well, no, I only said I was going to pay $100 instead of the $123 that's due.
That's where I, and that's the way I understood it in reading this, and I can understand it. I understand the situations where you may get out of town with a snowstorm, and you may not have your account information, and you're going to, on the phone verbally agree to make X amount of payment or a payment within some period of time, without a tracking document for that, there is no record, unless it was electronic, but you know. That's why we would agree to limit the possibility of here for emergency situations.
It's just a matter of customer service.
It's certainly.
We're taking care of our customers.
We are, and we also expect the customers to honor what they agreed to in front of the page.
They honor this one, so they subscribe to our service.
We have to keep the same interest in the city.
How long the extension maybe?
We usually don't go more than two weeks with that.
How often does this occur?
When we were accepting extensions over the phone before we'd asked council to put a policy in place, we usually received around 30 a month. And now that we've required it in writing, we usually have not more than five.
30 requests to extend?
Yeah, between 20 and 30.
I don't think that's all emergencies we did, a lot of town time.
Right. And I think in the best interest of the city, we'll protect the city's finances, so it's true.
How many of those 30 do we end up never collecting? Maybe go ahead and move out or do something, but never collect?
There've been a handful of times probably where they've requested the extension, and we assume that it is to get out of town without having to pay it, but it's not too often.
I think, can I ask, you have a document that says that the sentence could be removed?
Yeah, well, yeah, in that, I would like to see removing that, and I'm looking for it right now, the last part where it says, yeah, okay, where it says that the verbal, electronic, and/or phone request will not be accepted. I'd like that to be deleted and have it in there that these are all valid ways of requesting an extension. And I also, when I was doing some further research on this, I found that in, we have very conflicting things in our ordinances, and what I could see so far is they have not been rescinded in number 676. We have one place that says that we have to pay before the 15th of the month, and in another place, it says on or before the 15th of the month. In another place, in one of the ordinances, we have that you can extend for 20 days, and according to this, it says, and that has never been rescinded, and in this, it says 10 days or to the 25th. So I think we need a very thorough review of this whole thing to show that between 676 and 446, that it be consistent. There's a lot of inconsistency in our ordinances. But there are extenuating circumstances. People can be hospitalized, like Jim said, on the cruise ship, going afloat, like the Carnival cruise ship Triumph, or caught in a blizzard trying to get over from New York to Canada. So there are times when people have legitimate needs for these extensions, and they don't always, you know, they can't come into the office, and they cannot put anything in writing.
But if we use 30 days a month, all those people are not having...
No.
And they're here in town where they can come by and get it up there, and our circumstances where you're not, you're physically not in town.
And I highlighted the same sentence that you talked about, verbal, and I think, I highlighted in the numbers of things, and we should revise that. But it should not be believed. I think, that's where I think we should have a limitation. I know, same again, people have emergencies. People usually plan trips. People usually plan working abroad. I think a revision since we're stating that those will be taken on no more than two occasions per year. I mean, it's, to me, if we go from 30 requests to five, or so.
So what, what words do you want for that, to replace that sentence?
I would say verbal, electronic, and/or phone requests can be made no more than twice per year.
Okay. How about three, three, three? Five, five, six, 130. Four extensions.
In a consecutive 12-month period, that's not a row of 12-month period.
So are you going to put that in the form of a motion?
If we're discussing.
Because it's a discussion item, we need, I guess, council to direct staff to, we can place it, what kind of direction you want as far as where you want this policy to go or how you want it to look, and then we can bring it back to you for approval at the next regular meeting.
Go be in the utility payment extension policy.
The last, the very, the last sentence, Jennifer, verbal, electronic, and/or phone requests, and after that, should state something to the effect, can be made no more than twice during a 12-month consecutive period.
Do you want number six to remain?
Strike number six then.
Maybe number six answers the whole question. If they call the city manager and say, "I'm stuck in Timbuktu, and I can't get back from there, and you hold off on my water payment for two weeks," I would think that would be it.
Then shouldn't it be the city clerk and/or the billing, utility billing supervisor, any of them could do that if the city manager is not available or is off?
I personally think we should stay with that in number three, and leave number six as if there is an extreme, where somebody's hospitalized for two months, they could call and say, "Look, I requested this last month, or I requested this two months in a row. I'm still hospitalized," but that, to me, would be an emergency situation if Mr. Baker could intervene.
Okay, so you're directing staff... Okay, so you're directing staff to revise the last one to number two?
Yes.
And leave number six?
Yes, that would give him the, that would give him authority to waiver more than two if the occasion occurred, and that's where, and that's possible.
Jennifer, do you need him to restate that?
Got it.
The number two then, where it must be in writing, should that be changed then slightly to in, that seems to then be contradictory, I would say, in writing or verbal or electronic or phone requests.
You can change it to maybe Sunday or holiday, verbal, electronic, and/or phone requests may be accepted twice per 12-month period.
Will that be accepted?
It's just a staff direction.
I think we just have to come on.
Okay, any more discussion on number seven? We will move on to number eight, considering taking action necessarily regarding the Vanossen agreement about incorporation budget in the amount of $499 in order to fund a certified registration specialist who can take a ballot, dump, etc., and migrate to systems for award management.
I'm coming to the board of council tomorrow to request an amendment to our budget for 2012 through 2013. I'm asking, so there's nothing in our current budget that we cover these such as this, and like I said, it's for SANS, it's a system of awards management. In the event that, any of the grants that I write and submit, and I have already done one for CDC to USDA for the small business loans in the amount of $99,900, in the event that that's awarded, we would have to have this number. And I'm asking to take it for a certified registration specialist to make sure that it's done properly, and they also provide a year service that when it's time, and you have to renew these yearly, that they'll help me, they'll walk me through what I need to do to renew it for the following year. And so I plan on filing for more grants, so even in the event that this one's not awarded, it would still be good to have this number on file.
Is this a one-time fee?
Yes.
And it goes for multiple years?
No, it's for a year.
Okay.
And at the end of the year, they'll walk me through the steps, they'll help me to renew it the following year, and then, of course, the following year after that, I've had the experience, I know.
But there's not an additional charge?
No.
After the, after the first year?
That is correct.
You'll be able to apply for it from now on?
Yes, sir.
After this one, one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Council had already approved an amendment for the historical sign, and I attached that to, you can also, you also packet the previous minutes where they are approved, so I just wanted, while I'm amending, to hopefully add the 499 for that, for that expense, to go ahead and properly amend historical signs from 4,200 to the 4,721 and 62 cents. I mean, it was something that you had already approved.
One of the signs can be pulled up?
I met with the guy today, we went to the highway, and we had to select another spot because Tech dot said that we couldn't put it by the highway, we had to put it on the service road, so we had to look at other spots to put it so it'd be more visible to the highway. But the signs are ready and all he needs to do is send the completed paperwork to Tech dot.
So the department transportation changed their mind about where they.
They never really changed their mind. Our research, no. One of the Tech dot guys went on our behalf to try to get it changed to the highway, but it was never approved to be near the highway, it was always the service road.
On which side of the service road?
On.
Those were the highway or farther away?
Farther away.
That's in the people's property? That's in the pedestrian?
No, it's the roadway of.
It's the intersection.
Right.
Way over there.
Two feet over.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amending CDC's budget for 499.
And then for the 499 and the sign?
If it needs to be done, I think that's, I made the motion on the signs that specifically do that 47, so they wouldn't have to amend it, but if that needs to be included, we can do that.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that after I amended it, you looked at it, so why did you do that?
Well, I made the motion to approve it at 4,700, so it would be, it would in effect amend the budget, but if it needs to be amended separately, that's fine, I can do that too.
Okay, so I have a motion on my table by Councilman Smith, amend the budget at the 499 dollars for the dunes, and, do you have a second?
A second.
You have a second, by Councilman. Dinnings on paper, opposed, motion passes. We'll move on to number nine, considering taking action necessarily regarding the Vanossen Economic Development Corporation budgets are allowed under training and education as board members and staff.
I have new board members and they want training, and I'm very glad to hear that. I, in your packet, I included some courses from the Texas Economic Development Council. One of those classes is a basic economic development course, the one person to go is $700. We were hoping that we could let two go, those two come back and share what they learned with the rest of the board members. That's in Frisco, it's in June. And then the second class would be the sales tax workshop, and that's in Mesquite, and that's for $175.
How many would take it?
I don't recall the board discussing how many they wanted to go, but again, I would ask for two. That way you've got two people listening, and when they come back, you get two different points of view of what they learned.
How much do you have to make total costs for them?
I'm sorry, I didn't do the math. 175 twice would be 350. 700, it's twice, 12, 13.
1,000?
Plus, do I tell?
No, it's not.
For males?
Is there a spot in your budget?
No, that's wrong.
I mean.
There is, it was only a hundred dollars.
Is there, is an area in your, in your budget of money that was budgeted that has not been needed?
Not for the DC.
Okay. Has revenue been up or down from projected for the DC for this area?
It's about the same, but we no longer have someone cleaning the building, and we're only paying one person's salary now, so I am seeing a more increase.
So there is, there is. There is a spot in your budget that budgeted money was not?
No, because we only allow for my budget in the current budget.
I'm just asking, where, where's this money going to come from? Who's, who's?
Is there an excess?
From excess, is that?
Is there? Is there? There wasn't, yes.
Do you have some projected savings in other, budget accounts or another?
No.
Did the CDC have an extra money?
I thought they didn't.
I mean, we have money in the checking account that grows each month.
Undesigned, do you have any undesignated funds? Funds that aren't already, that aren't lined up to be spent?
Like advertising, you have 5,500.
We already used advertising.
Okay. Then you can't go over to classes and people have money. They can't give you money.
I know when we made the budget, we talked about 4,000 for the maintenance of the 221 building, has there been any?
No, sir.
So there, there's?
Not yet.
Money in that, in that budget item that has not been used?
Yeah, you could look at it that way.
Well, that's, I'm trying to find the money that you're asking for from somewhere else because you have to, you have to maintain a balanced budget.
And we haven't used the computer maintenance either, so there's 4,500.
So between maintenance, 4,500 and computer maintenance, where do you see that?
The 4,000 is for the building maintenance, 500 is for the year.
Oh, the computer maintenance, 500, the total is 4,500. So you've had no expense in those twos from October to date, right?
So far, that is correct.
And we have what, 40,000 expected this year?
That is correct.
And the legal expense?
I'm sorry.
The legal expense for 1,000, has that been?
Yes.
Tapped into, to that, to that extent?
Right, it's used.
Okay.
So into this month, we have like six months in this fiscal, and you have spent no funds in your maintenance or computer maintenance. And you're asking for total, is it 18, 15? 17, 15. 17 plus 1,500, or 700 plus 1,400?
Right, but I'm asking for two people for each event, so we can.
1,700.
Can we get you to take this back to your board and have them, and have them determine where they can make this money out of, and what fund they can put it out of, create a category for it to be in, and then you bring it back to us?
I can.
One's the first one?
I'm sorry, it's in June, however, that, only 50 people are allowed to take that class, so the sooner I can get that paid, the better the opportunity that someone would need to go.
Did you say the advertising, 600.02 is expended for the year?
Okay, advertising, we've already spent the 1,500 for the mapping, the 2,500 for retire in Texas, 1,000 for ICSC, so, yeah, we're pretty close.
4,500.
Yes.
Problem is, the only sheet we have to look at is one that doesn't have anything about the budget.
There's no updated expense.
There's nothing that we can do until you guys come up with a budget, and where do you want to take the money from, and show us before and after, and then we'll say, okay.
Can I recommend possibly you go visit with our tenant at Marshall and get an assessment of the current condition of the building and see if you might perceive any expense to be down on October 1st?
I would.
The only place I see to get it is maintenance and repair.
So are we going in a direction? Are we going to take this? Need more information?
I'll make a motion, we send it back to the board to determine where they want to take the money out of, where they want to fund those the money from, and let us see next time the before and after budget, so we can know where the money was taken out of. That make sense?
Sure.
What about the, you need to familiarize with reservation?
Is that the 175?
No, the 700.
That's the June 4th one. Another one, June 28th. The June 28th one, which we handle, but the June 4th one is.
You need to, when's your next meeting?
Next one.
June 28th. I mean, we could call a special meeting after that.
I would agree with that, but it proves something that the money that's, you know, right there, man.
So I have a motion for you, like, like to take it back to your board to figure out where the money's going to come from, where the board needs to approve it, and then bring it back to us. So do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, my counsel, two, we're all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 10, considering taking action necessarily regarding builder incentives.
Mayor of council, we had a meeting with Dr. Horton approximately three weeks ago. One of the questions that they had brought to us was when were the builder incentives that are currently in place, that were adopted four years ago, set to expire, and they were looking to continue progress in developing, building out and developing Georgetown, and they wanted to see if those incentives could be brought back to council and if approval of the incentive would be advantageous to not only the city but also the order as well.
Those incentives would apply to every house, building, I said, in my district.
Yes, sir. It's exactly what you're about to.
And you're asking for it to stay exactly as it was approved?
That's what Dr. Horton asked for, that's what we're to. Yes, sir.
It wasn't two, it wasn't two?
It was, we were waiving all of them back fees and getting the taxes, so this year, as far as the taxes are concerned, depending on the size of the tab, but just letting that go.
Yeah, after says that it was a three-year and reviewed each year within that timeframe, and I was wondering, have they been reviewed?
No, I'm not always sure. So.
By whom?
Does Dr. Horton pay by square foot or by cost?
Square foot, is it by comments, evaluation? Okay, just by valuation.
I thought they paid by square foot.
I think it was all done by.
And their, what's their average for, for just a, just the permit, not the inspection fees and all of that? What would an average permit fee be for Dr. Horton, each house, the building out there, from X dollar to Y dollar?
Between 8 and 900, and it's based on the value of the home, I guess. We request evaluation and then Bureau Veritas will check and make sure that it meets building standards.
The permit coordinator for, for Dr. Horton thought was under the impression that they paid by square foot.
Correct. They do an anna, but not a balance sheet.
That may be.
As I read through this, and I went and looked at, just had some help and gathered some information, and looking at some of the impact fees and permits, some of surrounding communities, knowing our last budget and the issues we're having to address with infrastructure, I'm a little concerned that we, the impact fee that we're putting away, if you look at what the fees would be, the money that's there, and as these houses are being built, they are an impact area of infrastructure. And as these houses are being built, they are an impact area of infrastructure. I'm not opposed to the connection fees as they are. But given we have till August, August to really look at this. I would, I would like to see a more in-depth review of possibly? Some type of a fee for impact for our infrastructure. And we also have an item coming up on the election to address the streets. If that fails, I think we should probably consider something possibly without? Being negative or pushing growth and development away, which we don't want to do. We need to figure the impact it's having to our streets, to our water systems and stuff like that. And really consider before we give it one hundred percent weight. Going up, but I feel like maybe it's a little early right now to make a decision on August issue. Take a little more in-depth look.
Can we get a report that shows how much it costs us? Cost of? For not having the impact fees? What we would have got had we still had it?
We don't have that report.
For the houses we've built in between? For the buildings that have been done between now and?
But let me ask, I mean, about three thousand, where we're knowing that?
Something like that. How many houses have we built since then till now?
Exactly. Are these the actual fees we would be charging when they're not waived from this schedule here? The three-quarter inch residential, the water impact is fifteen forty-four, and the wastewater is seventy-one, roughly twenty-three hundred dollars. That we weigh one hundred percent, right?
One hundred percent of impact fees.
And I, if you look, I hate to throw names around, but if you look at some of our surrounding communities. There's one that has an all-inclusive water tap, impacts, go for everything, it's four thousand dollars. And we're charging roughly, we weigh impacts, and we're getting six eighteen, five hundred, roughly thirteen hundred for connection taps. And there's a tremendous amount of revenue there, but I really think we should look at. And I think we could look at it and still be positive to our developers and builders, but?
I think the builders are trying to look forward, actually, we are probably. Asking them to wait. When they're, they're building homes in Anna and Austin both. If we hesitate or stall on anything, that, that shouldn't make them look at another place besides here.
Well, I?
Do we have any idea what Anna's doing?
D.R. Horton, according to their salesperson, they sold twenty homes, in the last two-week period, they sold twenty homes in Anna, and they sold four in Van Alstine. So there's already momentum there. And the homes are actually more expensive. But we don't want to do anything to discourage them from paying more pro Van Alstine as opposed to? And we, we don't want to give them any hesitation on that.
I agree with that, and I looked at Anna. And the best numbers I could come up with on a fifteen-hundred-square-foot home is roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. Which is thirteen hundred dollars less than what they're paying.
Well, now, what are the connection fees?
They charge thirty-five, forty-five cents per square foot. And then they charge per unit that goes into a home, twenty-four dollars for air conditioning units, ventilation systems, clothes dryers, ranges. Each thing has a fee associated with it. When you go through all of that, there's like, just a, what I would call an appliance fee that goes to each house. They have a mechanical permit, electrical permit, plumbing fee, roughly seven dollars for every outlet that's in the house, for a faucet, for outside connection. Anything to do with a plumbing fixture, roughly a hundred dollars in none of that adds up to like a thousand. And then the sewer, sewer taps and water tractors, seventy fifty each. You kind of throw it all together, and that's the reason I say I think it needs more in-depth look. But I came up with like twenty-five hundred for just a fourteen-hundred-square-foot house. And I, you know, we're in March, and D.R. Horton can build here by August. I just don't feel thirty days worth of purpose? To, to look at this knowing? If our, knowing our budget and our infrastructure and some of the monies that Mr. White needs at the wastewater and?
So you work with that in form of information? Up to table?
I, John, I just, I, we're going to have headlamp tax from these, from these homes that we work. There are lots of places in Collin County that D.R. Horton is looking to or is already bought land to be developed. I, I just don't want to, I don't want that train to be, to be slow at all. And I don't think that we're going to, the extra, the extra property tax that we're going to have from the homes that are built here. The more positive we can be for that, the more, the more positive we can be, the better off we'll be on the moment. And I realize we're taking, we're taking the hit. We realize that when we, when we lowered it before. That we would be giving up revenue in exchange for property tax. And that has come to realization now, that they're actually homes being built instead of just thinking about it. And I don't think waiting until any time, any period of time to give D.R. Horton a least bit of a hesitation. If they want to buy land in Bracing County, if they want to buy some in Collin County. If there's a hesitation on our part, they're going to make the decision to go to Collin County on the first. And I, I just want to, I want to see the incentive continue. I don't, I don't want to see it break down.
Would we approve it again for the three years?
Well, they call for review every year, and that?
Yeah.
That is a reasonable thing to do, if it never happens. But if we could, I would, I'd like to propose that this, the same three-year?
With review.
With review each year, that gives, that, that eliminates the hesitation that they could have right now. And that gives us a year to go through.
Frank? Have you communicated with them any about, you talked to D.R. Horton, I think so, I think this is really what? Have you talked to anything about the fees and that kind of stuff?
That was, that was their, they bought about it. That was the issue, they talked about development, they talked about the homes that they had purchased that were still available in the first phase and second phase. And they were asking about the builder incentives, when they were supposed to run the house, and the folks' councils intentions. And I said, honestly, we had it all discussed, we could look at it, and bring it back to council, so that way they can, they can begin discussions sooner than later. So that way, if we drag it out, I was perfectly honest with them, if we drag it out till August, and then put it on the, on the, on the July or August agenda. It may not happen in a timeframe that we want to get done. So we want to get it to y'all ahead of time for y'all to consider. So that way, we can find, we can find where y'all want to be as far as for any of the things to D.R. Horton, as well as any other builder in town.
I'd like to see the incentive stay a place where they for another three years with an annual review. And actually have a review. And then at the end of the year, we can, we can make those adjustments. I just don't, I just don't want to give them a reason for this.
So is that a motion?
I'll make that as much as I can.
I have a motion by council, so that's to extend the builder incentives three years with an annual review, do you have a second?
Council?
A second, by council, two, all in favor? Propose?
I didn't know you were.
So we have?
Who seconded the motion?
And include the passes, Councilman Jennings voted against.
The motion passes.
It does? Really? Okay, great.
So the motion passes. I don't know if we need to? Moving on to number?
Just a question, can we still have that report for next time?
Yes, sir.
Consider taking action, Mr. regarding awarding the deposit order of recent.
Mayor Council, we sent out RFP. There's a question, we received two bids back, one from Landmark Bank, as well as Independent Bank here in town. We have representatives from both banks here tonight. In two days, that we've, well, they remount out. We had some glitches in the system as far as getting that information out to council. Hopefully y'all received it over the weekend, had some time to review. And it's open for discussion at this time. We've, we've, as far as administratively, we've made a preliminary review of both documents. And we do, we do have some questions, as well as I believe y'all probably did. Anybody have any?
I just had a quick question, is there a reason that Texas Star is not having a proposal?
Yes, sir. We, all three banks were handed a proposal by staff. Any questions that arose as far as email communication were followed up with the other two banks to make sure we were on level field. And Friday morning, around ten AM, Landmark dropped off their proposal. And around four, five on Friday, Independent Bank fell through. We have not heard from Texas Star.
Was there any communication with them?
Yes, sir. And handed them a document as well as emails of the questions that were arising from both Landmark and Independent.
So you communicate with the questions from Landmark and Independent, you communicated with Texas Star?
Yes, sir.
Well, Tom, there's a whole bunch of stuff here.
Yes, sir, there is.
I hope you can narrow it down to a handful of facts on the, on the Landmark Bank too. Yours is a little bit smaller, but it's still pretty amazing document for, for a service to be behind.
Can we give each of them an opportunity to come before us and explain why they're better than the other guys? Make them earn their money.
Can we put a three-minute timer on it?
Yeah, yeah, three minutes.
Tom, you want to go first? I'll be happy. Mayor Council, I'm Tom Smith, the branch president of the Independent Bank here in Van Alstine. And we appreciate the opportunity to bid this. Just a quick thing here, Independent Bank Group, we are a hundred-year-old bank, bank group. We are based in McKinney. We are in banking lingo, about one point seven billion in assets. We have thirty locations spread around the, around the area here, all the way down to Austin, up to the Red River. And then west over into the Flower Mount, Collieville area. It wasn't probably fifteen years ago, we had offices in just Anna and half. So, you know, we certainly, along with the area, along here, have grown over the last, over the last fifteen years. Basically, the proposal that we've got here are probably going to be very similar. Basically, for all of the banking services, you're going to find that they're going to be offered for free. You know, it's, it's, there's not going to be a charge. I mean, if you kind of go through there, the, there's basically a no charge on the services we certainly offer in that banking. I'm confident that, that staff would find it a very seamless changeover from the present bank. We offer, of course, the, we will offer thirty basis points, basis point of one percent is a hundred. There's a hundred basis points in one percent, so that's the banker lingo that we use. We are offering, all of the city's funds would be held in an now count. And right now, the rate that we would pay on that would be point three five percent. So that's probably the pivotal thing that y'all will really want to hone in on. Again, we're offering, pretty much the services are going to be free. You know, NSF charge is free, wire transfer fee is free, you know, basically no charge deal. This is very symptomatic of what you find with most public funds. And our bank group has got probably about forty different municipalities and school districts. The, the school district has been banking with us since probably about two thousand and three. Well ahead of my time, I'm on the school board now in Van Alstine, but that was well ahead of my going on the board here. We, so you've got basically an all-free service deal, we'll pay point three five percent on the monies. That, of course, and basically what that is, is thirty basis points over our posted rates. So point three five percent. The, in excess of the FDIC insurance, we would collateralize, fully collateralize to the tune of a hundred and two percent of all of the city's monies by way of a federal home loan bank letter of credit. And which, we, what we would do, for instance, if the city decided to keep three million dollars with, with our bank. Then your FDIC coverage is two fifty. And then anything over above that, our bank, at our cost, would go out and purchase a federal, from the federal home loan bank, which is backed by the full payment credit of the US government, a standby letter of credit, which would be used to collateralize the deposits. The, the school district uses the same arrangement, and this was when, when the bids were first sent out. We ran this past Mr. Baker, and he ran this past y'all's council. And, and council concurred that there, certainly that is allowed within the municipal code. For us to either pledge US government securities or collateralize those deposits with a federal home loan bank, let's say, or what we call standby letter of credit. So basi, I'm sorry, Frank? That was one of the questions that y'all did pose? Yes. Which wasn't allowed in our, the municipal? Basically, a free service deal, point three, thirty basis points over, collateralize it with standby LCs. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much what you need to know, in my mind, about the deal. And I would, I'll kind of turn it over to y'all, let me let my colleagues hear. I would say something ugly about them if I could, but they're great people, so. I have nothing to say about them. They're incredible to ours, so.
Tom, what's your, what's your total, total assets, one point?
Total assets, one point seven billion, and we have about a hundred and sixty-five million in capital. We're considered a well-capitalized bank. Based in McKinney, and about thirty locations. Most importantly, though, we have the location west of town here. And in today's day and time, we certainly would offer internet banking and remote deposit capture, where you could actually make a deposit right from your, your office here, with the equipment that we would furnish. So, anyway, appreciate y'all's consideration and?
I made Jennifer smile.
Let me turn it over to my friends here from Landmark. Thank you, Mr. Smith. You bet.
When did you get our proposal?
Good evening, I'm Nathan P. Free, this is Sam Henry, and we're representing Landmark Bank here in Van Alstine. It's funny, Tom came up and said, you know, I was thinking, I wrote down on my pad, one word, how to explain it, it's free. You know, I mean, and we're doing the same thing, it really is. You know, most of the time when you go to, when you're working with the communities, whether it's the school district or the cities. Landmark Bank tries to do the same thing with all of their communities that we bid on. And that is to offer all of the services for free. You know, it sounds very similar. Many banks offer a lot of the same services, you know, the remote deposit capture. A lot of the cash management services, I'm sure, are going to be similar between the two. We are at, I believe, one point eight billion in assets.
Right.
You know, some of, some of the things that we offer are, is a local bank as well. You know, some of the history behind Landmark, I think we're a hundred-plus years in business by the Landrum family. And it started out of Missouri, and we have banks in Missouri, Oklahoma, and North Texas. So Van Alstine is our most southern branch that I'm proud to be a part of. I really enjoy the community, have enjoyed working here, and being involved in a number of different aspects.
Is the point three five staying? Is that the same offering?
As far as the interest you're on?
Yes, we actually have two options. One would be fixed at point three five or floating. So that you would have with a floor of point two five, but it could go up if rates go up. And this is a three-year, a three-year. And this is a three-year depository contract that could be reviewed annually. So basically, you're looking at apples-to-apples comparison.
Floating was supposed to run away from the screaming, aren't we?
Well, if you have a mortgage, you are. If you're earning money, sometimes floating can be a good thing. You know, if we said floating and it starts at 5, then I'd be a little scared of that. But floating is starting at .25, you know, if they raise prime, you know, six months from now, that could be a good thing for you.
What's been the trend?
It's been very flat since 2008.
And you still have the same insurance?
We have the same insurance and collateral. I personally have the City of Sherman as one of my depository customers, just completed five years and moved for another five years with the city. And we're using the letters of credit from the federal home loan bank. However, we were proposing here to use securities we could use either, so whatever the council was more comfortable with, we'd be happy to do. Would also say that we already have accounts from Urban Development and from the Community Corporation, and those are interest-bearing rates that are currently lower, so we would include those accounts as well under the depository for the whole city. They're two separate accounts, so we would bump up those rates to match what the city is going to get and make it counterpackaged. We also would offer special consideration to employees of the city. We have accounts that we would offer a variety of reductions in rates, terms of loans, such deposit boxes, different things that they might have a personal need for. Obviously, would be beneficial if you had all of your employees on a direct deposit, which we would also like to propose and propose to the city to help direct people to have a direct deposit. They wouldn't have to be with Landmark, they could be with the mayor-related bank. That's something that would also assist the city in life and purpose.
And that will, obviously, whether either company is a way that can reduce costs, and I'm sure that, you know, we would be very happy to help the city look at options of reducing the cost, you know, printing checks, if one way is direct deposit. So that's just one method. Remote deposit capture is another method that saves time. You know, you don't have employees driving around, they can do it right there from their location. So there's a lot of great, great options that banks can offer now, and Landmark is a perfect size. Something that we've all been talking about recently is that we're the perfect size to have the technology to compete with the mega banks in the world, and we're large enough that we have better technology than some of the smaller ones that just don't have the money to keep up.
So you will cover the cost of printing the new checks? Is that what I understood?
Yes, but one of the things we do when we, if you transfer over, is we will cover that initial cost.
And that would be, that would be an idea as well.
I have a question on that. Our checks, the checks that we use are typically printed from our software company, so that it's just formatted correctly and just shoved in and go. Would you reimburse us that cost or contact them directly to initiate the check printing?
Whichever way they prefer, we could, we could do the reimbursement, you know, whatever the.
I don't know if that applied, that you would provide checks or you would go with our software?
We, we have a company that we use, you know, that does, it's Clark American Insurance, yeah, probably very similar. There's Deluxe and Clark in the check world, they're the two most common. And so, you know, we normally would go through them, and we can get the three to a page, you know, that printout of the computers, we can do the handwritten kind, you know, there's a wide variety. So, but if you do them through a software company, we can definitely work with you on that. And there's, we have individuals that buy them, you know, from magazines, so we.
Are we required to buy through the vendor or?
I don't believe we're required to. I think it's just been formatting.
But you might have issues if you go with a different check.
We're happy to do whatever makes it easy for you. Any questions? Thank you for your time. We look forward to you working.
The rates from Texas Star were tied to the rise and fall of the Federal Reserve funds, parking of federal funds. The current rate back then was 4%. So it was a, what the fix was a point.
Does that have a recommendation for you?
We have enough for a recommendation. We have enough for a review, what we looked at initially, what the benefits of the two, going through the initial bids, and both of them have the ACH file transmission that it worked with our text files. One question that I did have from Mr. Smith was, y'all have Notch or something like that? I don't know if you're familiar with your system. Y'all accept text file or y'all would provide the support, the software support?
Certainly provide the support. And Frank, I will say, that's something I'll check into rather than, you always want to undersell and over-deliver. And I'm more of a lending guy and not, and probably an operational expert, but, you know, I feel confident that there won't be anything that's going to be a trip up as far as.
Closest ever generic.
And, I'm not trying to shop in here, but the, to be honest with you, the investment timeframes as well as, as well as the funds are more liberal with Landmark as far as the lower limits and upper limits of what we invest, as far as, and also the timeframes. Very close, but honestly, in the initial review, Landmark is the better option. I mean, my funds are all with Mr. Smith over Independent, so I know he's going to throw everything out the screen, but, but in the initial review, Councilman Smith, Landmark is the better option.
You said that you were in a situation that there was more review that you needed to do or could do?
We've looked through it over the last two days when we had time, and I would prefer that we had more time.
Do you want to table this?
Please, if we could. I know we're, I mean, we're, I mean, four, five years past, five, six years past, so.
Another 30 days.
Another 30 days doesn't hurt. We have the proposals, I mean, they're fixed, so it's not as if we're going to be going back and trying to one-up each other. So I think further review would be in the best interest of both parties.
I'll make a motion at the table to issue. We haven't had time to further review.
Can I pass my voice out?
I have a motion to table. This is, this on X B. I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a second from here. I look this direction first. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Ask unanimous.
Sorry, gentlemen.
No, don't bother them.
And if I, so that everybody knows, once you do make a decision, the law requires that all the funds get transferred over within 60 days of that decision being made. Wanted to make the stat there.
Like Jill. Next item on agenda number 12, consider and take any action necessary regarding ordinance, amending ordinance number 680 as it relates to bulk water rates.
Mayor, Council, Steve Watts going to come up and present on the bulk water rate proposal.
I'm the mayor, I'm the council. Good evening. From the August 13, I mean, November 13, July 13, we asked for a bulk meeting of the staff to research surrounding cities. We did a research with Jennifer and myself, and we found that we were overcharging the bulk rate, losing significant amount of business. And if you notice in 2011, we sold 2.16 million gallons of water. This year we have 79, we had price for sale by the market. And we have contractors and developers looking at the bulk rate at a cheap price. Based upon our rate at 5 million gallons, at our current rate, it'd cost $826,000 to sell that water. And most average cities in this area are charging between $10 and $7, and our, about $7,000. My recommendation is that we go to $8,000.
Is that what we were before? We did all this, screwed it all up?
I'm sorry. I recall that this, earlier, when I got to looking here, when we made, when we made the water rate changes in the fall, this was in the old 25 gallons we talked about, we needed to change it to 1,000 gallon increments. But we never went back and changed the cost, and the cost of the new rates rolled down into the, to this in a state of 25 gallons, which made the cost astronomical.
What would be the advantage of 8 versus $7, like Melissa, to be competitive?
The only thing I looked at is, do I want to give it away? I mean, I do like to make a little money. And I felt like hitting between Hannah and Melissa was a good range. If I had to deliver, if somebody from this area was building, had to drive an extra 10, 20 miles, $8 may be more beneficial for them than going $7, $7. I mean, they'd lose that much in diesel cost.
Also, Mayor, Council, in discussions with GTWA as far as pulling water out of the take-or-pay water line, the CGMA water line. Melissa receives the water gravity fed. We would have to pay for some pumping costs, so in that discussion, that's where Mr. Watts came up with $8 over the 7, is for us to recoup some of those pumping costs that we're going to have to pay GTWA to get that water to us. But it would be our first opportunity to start taking that surface water. Of course, it'd be untreated and be non-potable at this point.
We could get rid of some of that water.
Yes, sir.
We'd actually recoup some of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is primarily salt treatment, is it?
Yes. I've included in your packets the letter from Paul Billingsley, that we, which is what stimulated this, this discussion, we talked about. You know, his contractor called and started asking questions about what would cost for them to purchase 5, 5,800 gallons. We factored up the cost, that's where the 800 and some off, 820, some odd thousand dollars came from. Wasn't going to, wasn't going to happen, they wanted to start moving the dirt around unless they could find the water somewhere else. They even discussed putting a well in the ground to try and pull that water themselves. And this, this email is a reflection of that conversation. And also over at the Plywood Construction over at the college, it also, and them being able to do more dirt, dirt work on their project on the South Hurst College campus, had caused them a lot of heartburn as far as the current water rate, them being able to take and utilize it for dirt work as well.
Would we make it retroactive?
That would be entirely up to y'all, but Billingsley has not taken any, any water yet in the colleges. To my knowledge, they, they received a meter last month.
Right. We don't actually, at this point, we don't invoice them until they use it, so a retroactive wouldn't be necessary because they haven't been invoiced for, for the water consumption yet.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the bulk water rate at $8 per gallon as recommended by Mr. White.
For 1,000?
For 1,000 gallons.
Yeah, not again. Do I, okay, I have a motion by Councilman Jennings to propose an $8 rate per 1,000 for, for bulk water. I have a second. Jim, Jim has a second, I do have a second motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Ask unanimous. Thank you very much. Unless you do, you get to stay for the next one, right?
Yes.
Consider and take any action necessary regarding an ordinance amending ordinance number 446 as it relates to temporary fireplug meter deposits, connection and transfer fees.
When I looked at this ordinance, the meter deposit was $600. The piece of equipment that I actually put out there is almost $2,000, so I'd like to at least cover my costs if all that brass suddenly disappeared. So that's the reason I'm making a recommendation of $2,000 as a deposit.
Do companies ever provide their own meter?
Sometimes, sometimes.
And if they provided their own, they wouldn't have paid?
Well, the only thing with, they're providing, they have to have the meter certified, and it has to be, the certification has to be presented to us to make sure the flow is accurate. But, I mean, in the past, I mean, in other places I've worked, yeah, they have to buy.
Is it more common than not to have them provide their owners?
Most times they haven't, just rent watch city, because most of them don't want to certify.
Okay.
So this is a rent of the fireplug?
It is a deposit.
A deposit, so if they use it and then return it, then they get their money back?
They get their money back.
Okay.
And that 2,000's investment is just our cost of doing business?
Well, well, it's, they're paying, they're paying a meter rent, but this is just a deposit on that meter.
Okay, how much is the rent?
4,13, 40 is the meter fee, if it's a two-inch.
This is a four-inch.
I think he's asking, how much does it cost to buy a new meter?
No, how much, how much is the rent? Monty, per gallon?
It's based upon the size of the connection itself. It's a one-time renting.
Yeah, I don't have the fee, the figure for a four-inch.
But we do have it disappear.
My question was going to be if, when you put these on for a customer like that, in the benefit, who's liable on that? Is it the contractor or is it the city?
Usually, city needs it. And I'm in the process of buying a special set of locks that they just made in the last two years, and that's due to all the brass thefts. It's pretty tough to get into, and it shouldn't deter as much as possible. But, I mean, if you, if you got a willing, somebody willing to spend some time, don't matter what you put on there, they'll take axe off, cut it off, cut the whole meter off.
Would it be possible to put in the, I'm sure they signed something when they come in to do this, that theft is responsible with the contractor?
I might prefer the general.
They, they should maintain a construction side.
Because some of these meters are placed on the side of highways, and it's usually a weight from the construction side. Now, if we did set up one for the future down on County Line meter, then we'd fix it to where it was a permanent, permanent fixture. We'd make it something that they could still cut off. We'd put a little more security in there.
Generally, if they're, if, once they, you don't replace them either, they have the, they have the capability to take it off each year, you know?
No, it's, we pretty much try to secure it as possible, because it's this long, and it weighs about close to 100 pounds, and we have to sport it each time.
And it takes that fireplug out of service for that length of time?
No, they still use it service. The fireplug, big fireplug, yeah, they still got two more connections on it. In our fire department, although they got two, it's played out.
Any discussion? I have a motion.
I make a motion to take, uh, Steve White's recommendation to have required two thousand dollars deposit.
I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a first one. Motion, the second. I have a, all with a favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, pass. You give him to the one gentleman?
Yes.
I forgot to tell you.
Thank you, Josh.
Number fourteen, consider taking any action necessary regarding approval of the ordinance regarding filming in the city.
Mayor, Council, uh, this was live on the stable, uh, last council meeting, uh, regarding, uh, filming within, uh, filming guidelines within the city of Van Alstine. Uh, the vision that was requested was to, uh, define, uh, it used to be commercial in nature, uh, that has occurred, and it's on, uh, the first page after the index, under purpose, uh, commercially used of, and second paragraph. And it states towards the bottom with last, uh, last full sentence, for purposes of these guidelines commercially used, means of city-owned property for the exclusion of the general public, used by a professional production slash filming company and/or filming of picture-taking on location for more than one hour for other than personal use.
Does the Texas Film Information, uh, does that require a membership, or what, what type of an organization is that?
It's a, it's a state supported, um, organization, as far as membership, I don't, that's not, that's not the case.
So you don't have to be a member of the commission in order to, to film? It's not like a union of?
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Under purpose, it says, uh, the city manager reserves the right to impose additional regulations. Can you give me an example of what an additional regulation might be?
Unforeseen, uh, that arise that we don't account for. I don't have any, there could be something unusual that will fall outside of current guidelines.
Okay, I, you know, here, it talks about, you know, public safety and welfare, and I was just wondering what else might be included in something like that.
As with any production or anything that we don't necessarily, uh, have to draw over, it'd be anything that's unforeseen that, that we haven't accounted for, that will fall outside the guidelines and its document.
Okay, and the, uh, application of a processing fee of twenty-five dollars, does, is that only for the commercial ones, or is that includes a pro, any product group that's, uh, doing some filming?
The whole purpose was to go back and identify that we were going to a commercial document, so yes, ma'am, it's gonna apply specifically to the martial.
Strictly martial, okay. And, um... Now, I had a question too about words, talks about off-duty, uh, police officers and firefighters shall be paid by the production company at the rate of no less than one and a half times their hourly rate. Shouldn't that be just negotiated between the parties, like, uh, many of the policemen , uh, work, uh, in other jobs, uh, and that's not negotiated that way? I was wondering why it would be, um, one time and a half if they're doing it in their off-duty time?
We don't want to hinder a production from coming in and having to negotiate and on the stream of the process. This is a point of document, to try and make sure that it's our, every contingency that we can forecast and foreshadow is identified on the front.
I just think that should be something negotiated between the parties, perhaps in time and a half, but...
How do we verify then that they negotiated and do it, even if they?
Well...
Do we expect them to provide? You know, if they're doing something later to fire that they're...
If they're doing something, if they're doing something in the part that's inside a hazardous process, we would need, we would need personnel on, onsite that would, that would be trained, uh, accordingly. The, uh, we don't want, the, where I can see this being an issue is we don't want to have, um, a production company have to change anything because they can't negotiate on the time and degree of the rate. Uh, we want, we want, we would like for them to be able to know upfront, what are the rates, here's what they're paying for, and what they're for.
But then they could bring their own, uh, security in, so that they don't have to pay the time and a half. I mean, uh, any bank, you know, they use off-duty police people, um, I just don't understand why it has to be time and a half.
Is this a, came on a usual document that most people use?
This is the, this is the document that's...
They already expected that way. I mean, the, the people are doing the...
Martial people.
It's always probably done that way everywhere, so they see nothing wrong with it, probably. It's one less thing they have to do, is find officers and do it, so.
But they could use their own security if they wanted to, as opposed to our police officers.
Within certain limits, I would think so. And then, uh, they, probably with their police, even more so than public fires, unless they have to block off city streets or block off something that, you know, the police department does have to be involved in the rerouting of the way. I don't know.
Initially, they could. Of course, it states, uh, first, um, the first sentence, city manager, constellations chief, police, and our fire chief shall have the authority to stipulate additional fire police requirements and level of staffing for the same at any time during a film project if it was determined to be in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare, which costs should be borne entirely by that.
I think it comes down to a matter of the city needs to have basically control of the film and not, not the production company. And in that sense, we would want to use our staff who knows our community. I think this, this places that control under the city, and city manager, our police chief.
Any other questions? Comments? Do I have a motion on what to do about this? I make a motion to re-accept the, uh, ordinance, or is it, is it considered an ordinance? Yeah. Uh, it's related to filming in the city. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Don, uh, James, second motion. All with a favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, passed. Consider taking any action necessary regarding ordinance amending ordinance number four thirty-nine as it relates to noise regulations.
Mayor, Council, um, our attorney, Julie Ford, uh, made the changes that she perceived needed to be changed, uh, based upon your direction after the last council meeting back in February. Has everybody got an opportunity to review it?
I've had, I've had an opportunity to review it, and I think it has become far more complex than we actually needed with Van Alstine for a, what came to council in January is a simple complaint by citizens, uh, construction noise latency issue. Ms. Tolliver had, had asked for some consistency, and this is just, included with times, daytime, nighttime, time restrictions, decibel levels, uh, it's gonna require a rech, retrain by equipment for the police vehicles to record decibel levels. Uh, I think it's far more than what we needed or intended to do. I think a very simple clause to the, to the original ordinance we had, like I had suggested back in January, to address construction within the city limits and residential areas would have supplied, based on a time of, say, eight P M. or whatever the city's saying.
You're dealing strictly with construction?
Yes, ma'am. The, the issue that came was the construction noise in, in the residential neighborhood. It wasn't, and this would deal with, if, if we could see if the police receive a complaint that they're running steel saws, our, our police would have a tool to go and say, and of course, when they apply for a building permit, they would be told the construction is from seven A M. to eight P M. in the evening, which is pretty much the routine for, for most cities.
Except in the summer, whenever, uh, the roofers need to start earlier. We, we agreed to six o'clock.
I would have, I would really have no issue with six to eight P M. I really would not. I, I don't, I don't feel six A M. is that early. Roofers will be, roofers are approved generally by ten or eight o'clock, and in today's construction means, I mean, you get a roof, those guys are finished, they can, they can improve the house before ten o'clock. So I have no problem with the six to eight P M. at all, that is, that is what I had rigid recommendations.
So the ordinance would say that construction can occur between six A M. and eight P M. Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
What about holidays, Sundays?
Billy had mentioned about people working on their own homes.
Yeah, yeah, I think there has to be a section there that says, if it's your own home, you're allowed to work from, you know, eight o'clock to ten o'clock, or seven o'clock to ten o'clock. So that people that own their own property, you know, can't have, have the opportunity to work on their own property while they're still working in a regular job, because they may do a lot of the construction work during the evening, and stuff like that.
I, I, I think we're getting off on two different tracks again. That an individual who owns a property and is, that does not occur that often. Uh, if someone picks up the phone and calls and he's building at ten P M., he's gonna fall into the deal, and how is that gonna happen, uh, personally? It's not going to. This, this is to deal with where they're busting five or six lots at a time off in areas such as Georgetown, and have framing crews in over the evening for ten P M. at night, and that is the issue. Occasionally, is, is occasionally, is, is Mr. Smith gonna buy a lot and go out there and start framing his house? It could happen, and if I live next door too, I could call, but in, in likelihood, I, I just don't see that happening.
Can you come over here?
Or I could come over and... I've got a saw.
Neighbors talking to neighbors and neighbors affecting neighbors is, is one thing. So the wording could be, the city allows commercial construction crews to operate between six A M. and eight P M. Monday through Saturday. That gives the designation between private and, and commercial, is that?
Yes.
And that's okay with everybody?
And the other time is then, uh, six to ten, for other items, like mowing your lawn?
Yeah, we, this would be a clause for cities to that, yeah, but it'll stay six to ten.
That's what I'm saying, strictly construction.
Yes, it'll stay six to ten.
So when they have a party here in this center, they can go, their music can go till ten o'clock?
Six to ten, what day, all days of week?
Monday through Saturday.
I'd say Monday through Sunday, I mean, Monday through Saturday.
What happened on Sunday?
I turn...
I don't, I think, if they want to work on Sunday, that's their privilege.
Seven days a week, seven days a week, I think so too.
I don't think we have the right to stop them from working.
On commercial, under?
No, under.
Anybody? Anybody?
Most construction companies will not do it, but...
I think a club's a construction company that has...
Was, is there anything, I saw something in one of these that talked about distance to the nearest home.
They, they have worked on something with it.
Yeah, I know they have. And I, I know people that were home, that were building their own house, were doing part of it, and were working out there at ten o'clock at night, and that...
But this, if, if the wording is correct, that commercial construction crews can only work from six A M. to eight P M. Monday through Saturday, and that leaves it open for everybody else to work whenever, whenever they want.
Okay.
I, I, I have, I have several construction people that come in...
Yeah, okay.
And, and I've asked everyone of them about Sunday and the hours, and the hours, the eight P M. is not a problem, and they said we never work those. I haven't found a company yet that works in Sunday.
I have seen it in Georgetown just because they were behind.
Well, but...
They had a lot of rain weather, and they, right there working, so.
He, Mr. Perez works on Sundays.
Every now, every now and then, okay.
So I, I think it should be seven days a week. I mean, they're not going to do it unless there's an emergency or a, you know, they're behind or some, uh, unforeseen thing happens.
I, I would prefer, we don't disagree very often, but I, I'd like to see it for Monday through Saturday, and, and for commercial companies. I, I think that would be more...
The other question I had then was related to, I, I think in one of these documents there was a statement about if you were three hundred feet away from the nearest house, you could do anything you wanted to, basically, because you were far enough away where your sound wasn't gonna bother anybody. I mean, I'm, I'm saying like where I live, two blocks over from that, if they started doing construction on Coke, it wouldn't bother me at all because I wouldn't hear it or know if, if they even care about it.
I, I would like the motion that we amend the noise ordinance to say, the city of Van Alstine allows commercial construction crews to work between six A M. and eight P M. Monday through Saturday.
Can there be an exception for, uh, a Sunday if they need to?
I second the motion to make.
Can't yet, I have no... I got, I got accepted. Okay, you said you would like to make a motion, you want to make a motion?
Uh, that, that's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion, a motion, Jim Smith, Councilman Smith, to change the, uh, to where the commercial, uh, construction, commercial construction cannot be done except for during the hours of eight A M. to eight P M., or seven?
Six A M.
Six A M., okay, six A M. to eight P M. Monday through Saturday. Do I have a second to that? I have a question for, well, yes, wait, I have a second.
We're gonna amend four thirty-nine, I'm trying to interrupt y'all, but we're gonna amend four thirty-nine in the interest of continuity, let's please do it, where it excludes it from eight P M. through, uh, between the hours of eight P M. and six A M. Is that, is that okay?
Okay. So the, the amendment we're making is just for construction, it doesn't affect anything else?
No, I think, uh, do I have a second to that motion?
I second that.
Okay, I have a second. Councilman Jennings, all with a favor, raise your right hand?
What about discussion?
Oh, you can have discussion, you can raise it. Would you like to have discussion?
I would like to see if we couldn't add in that, uh, if there's an exception, uh, that they can ask for an exception, uh, if there is a need, uh, to finish a house in a particular period of time because of bad weather or other things that they have, uh, they could have a, an avenue whereby they can request, uh...
Or an application from the city to the city?
Yeah.
Generally, what happens under those circumstances, when you experience rain days or something during a construction period, you will upsize your crew following days to catch up on it. If you lose eight hours on Monday, over the course of the next two days, you'll upsize your crew, you're gonna add eight hours back. upsize your crew, you bring that in and back to the reason. I just don't see it as acceptable to stay for the full success of the...
If it's being phrased as when it's prohibited, prohibited between 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., but all day on Sunday, to make it a true narrative?
Any other words, discussion? Do we have a motion with a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, one abstain. Okay. Next one is?
Number 16. Make those necessary changes, Mr. Mayor and Sheriff.
And it has to be published, the caption has to be published in the paper. The date is published in the paper.
It only has to be published when you want?
Could we make, could we make calls to the all-hood, some of the contractors that are doing, that are changing, as a courtesy?
Sure. Wait, send a police officer.
Okay, number 16, considering taking any action necessary regarding authorizing advertisement of a legal services request or proposal. Soon that means, do we actually do anything
Mayor and Council, current city attorney Julie Ford has made a move to her, to a new firm where she's a full partner. We don't have a current agreement in place. There's two options here. Y'all can either go out for RFD for legal services, or you can just request to enter into an updated agreement with Julie Ford.
Does the council want to run the executive session to discuss it?
Yes.
Okay. Executive session, in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, open meetings law, the city council may need in a closed executive session to explain to applicable laws. We are now gonna recess in the closed session in accordance with section 551 dot 001, Texas Government Code for the following. Section A, section 551 dot 074, to deliberate the duties of the city attorney. B, section 551 oh seven one two, to receive legal advice regarding the Caesar Fund.
And you would also want to add under A to discuss agenda item 16.
Okay, also under A, we will discuss agenda item 16. And I close the regular session now at 8:25 p.m., and we meet closed session. You all welcome to sit.
I'll make a motion that we enter to a contract with Julie Ford's new law firm, adequate.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to go back into the contract with Julie Ford, as being a city's attorney?
I'll second that.
Second, Karen, you were, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, and have the amendments. The Department reports. Jennifer?
I would just like to say, you may have seen in the paper, and I think someone was nice enough to put it on Facebook for me, we'd like to recruit election workers. They'd only be working Election Day, but we will have training April 10, and then we can provide several other resources for training. Vicky Cupid, she has volunteered herself so recently to service the election judge, which we'll bring back before you all for official appointment next month. But I would like to get at least three other election workers and possibly a student election worker. So if you know anyone who's a qualified voter in the city election and would be interested in serving, please ask them to come see.
Thank you, Julie. Julie?
I have nothing.
Nothing at this time?
No, there's been patch.
Things you're looking at as far as development and as far as home building here in the city, I think some of the numbers were mentioned earlier, as far as conjunction with the noise ordinance. South Preston College, I believe I mentioned in an earlier council meeting, is moving along. Thankfully, the water, updated water, bulk water rate will help us significantly, and we will communicate with other developers that have shown interest in breaking ground. Appreciate your continued cooperation and everybody that came to attend.
Okay, mayor and city council, any comments? Jim? Don?
No, sir.
I'm Robin.
Let's just council and no, and as mayor, yeah. I can speak as mayor very often, so that, no, the only comment I had, if, I don't know if any of you are actually running for any of the offices that are coming up in the city, if the next time, if you come to the next council meeting, or if you hear that somebody is coming that's running for one of the positions, go ahead and introduce yourself at council meeting, so people will know who you are. Okay? Are any of you, oh, we got some, right, okay. Want to introduce yourselves, tell who you are?
I'm Timmer, Republic, I'm the mayor.
I'm Melvin Barf, I'm ready for your place.
My place?
Nice to meet you.
I'm mayor for, I'm mayor now, today. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll go.
Karen, second that motion. The amendment selection goes.